Not till seven, actually. Unless you have seven, like going in.
No.
That's what I thought.
I didn't want to say.
Yeah. That's what I was thinking. Because I knew that. So that's good.
Is that what you did?
Oh, no.
Yeah.
Unless we want to move just no sound. Sound is now.
Does someone want to do that?
Could we?
Oh, yes, I will. Move it to... First thing, are you under new business?
Sure.
Okay.
I would move both, three and four, B, three and four.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
Get it over with. Two.
We have to fix this. Madam Clerk?
We're ready.
Okay. Thank you. We'll call this February 10th, 2020 council regular meeting to order. Could you leave us some personal questions, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Tonight's roll call. Bucklon?
Present.
Osanga?
Here.
McClure?
Here.
Butts?
Here.
Cease is excused. Mayor Terry?
Present.
You have a forum.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is citizen comments on any subject except those items scheduled for public hearing. We do not have anything scheduled for public hearing this evening. Madam Clerk, would you announce those signed in, please?
The first person signed in is Liz Demoss.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Liz Demoss. I reside within Seward City Limits. As you know, I have submitted my application for the recently vacated council seat. I would like to take this opportunity to tell you a little about myself and why I would like to serve the city of Seward. My husband and I are long-term Alaskans. We have lived in Seward for 13 years. We are fortunate to have family that live here and enjoy participating in community and school events. I have worked in the hospitality industry for almost 30 years. My experience owning and operating a local business that is open year-round has given me the insight of the needs of local business owners and employees in Seward. We have owned and operated the Seward Ale House at Fourth Avenue Lodging since 2007. We undertook a major renovation to the building at that time, immediately familiarizing myself with the process of obtaining permits and working with the city of Seward. We continue to make improvements to our downtown building with this past year renovating one of our commercial storefronts and leasing to another year-round business, the Loan Sheet Round. It is important to us to set high standards for the industry while creating your round jobs in Seward. Having the skills to manage a budget that fluctuates seasonally encourages me to find creative solutions to the challenges of operating a business in a seasonal community. In addition, as a licensed Realtor, I am familiar with the local housing market and the challenges that we as a community face with that. As a member of the council, I feel I can bring support and balance. I have familiarized myself with the council rules and procedures, city code. I intend on doing my homework on my own time so I can contribute as much as possible during the meetings. I am open-minded, and I believe all groups and citizens deserve to have their voices heard. I do not come with any personal agendas or any special interests. I admire the professionalism and integrity of our current council, and I hope to be a positive contributing member with your vote tonight. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next signed in, Madam Clerk?
Madam Mayor, next signed in is Julie Kreitz.
Hi, Madam Mayor, council. I'm Julie Kreitz. I reside within Seward City Limits of Seward. I posted an application for vacancy for the city council. Just wanted to let you know a little bit about myself and my family. I'm currently a family nurse practitioner at the Seward Community Health Center. We've been here for three years in Seward. I've been at the health center for two years. Prior to that, I was at Gagatch and then North Star Clinic when I was originally hired. My husband has been the deputy fire chief of Seward since 2018 and is recently appointed fire chief. I have a 10-year-old daughter who goes to Seward elementary. She's in fifth grade. She's active in the Seward swimming team the last three years and also in student leadership team as well. Although, we are originally from Georgia and lived in Alaska. Prior to that, I'm from France, who I work at the Shalawka National Center for Church. I have an interest in serving on council since living here the last three years. I've here attended sessions and approached and watched in the life that has provided and I've been to form. I admit that you've had a chance to review my candidate statement. I do have a particular interest in some of the issues in regards to the city of Seward. I have experience on being as a board member. I currently just finished my board running with Southern Region EMS Council as a South Area Coordinator for the Prince William Sound. And I currently serve as Secretary of the Seward Volunteer Fire Department Board. If chosen for council, I hope to work actively to overcome some of the issues in regards to housing that we have. I know we've got a lot of industry that's bringing in some, a lot of people to town, and that's one of the biggest issues that I see facing us. So I look forward to working on the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next signed in?
Next signed in is Bruce Joppa.
Madam Mayor, council members. Bruce Joppa, way outside city limits. I spoke before several times about collectives' grades, personal experience. We got our January bill, and lo and behold, it was our December bill, both inside the city and out. Well, it didn't take long, take a look at degree days, to realize that those, the month of January, is extremely cold. So when I realized that I'm paying for a service that I want, then I just really had to decide, is it worth it? I could reduce my bill. I could cut the electric off or go out cutting wood or doing other things. Not everyone in town can do that. So what we need to do is find an efficient way of buying electricity. We need to look forward. We have projects that are on the books. Some are very close, but some are a little farther away. And I encourage you to be forward-looking and aggressive and ambitious and listen to all the crazy ideas. Discard a few, but some of them will pan out. The Lowell Canyon Hydroelectric, I have grand hopes for. I know that you have, the council has passed a motion to fund that. I don't think it's been actually got to the spender yet, but I encourage you to stay on top of that. Other things, I talked about battery power. I had a discussion with Andy Baker today, and he will be going over to Cordova on another mission. And their project over there will be very similar to the kind of things Seward will be looking at. As I said before to you, I see a lot of magazines with a lot of far-out ideas. There's no reason why we can't be far out with our thing.
Madam Mayor, last signed in is Linda Paquette.
Linda Paquette, outside the city limits. I'm here speaking as a member of the Airport Committee. And I thought Bruce was going to talk about the airport, so I hope you have his laydown here and have had a chance to look at that. So I want to say thank you. I'm honored to have been a part of this committee. You've seen a revised resolution from Carol Griswold, and that, she did a great version of that resolution, taking what is in your packet and then rewriting it. But it really ends up being a new resolution, and it's excellent. I'd just like to get it on the record that my experience of speaking with the folks at DOT is that when you talk to DOT, you hear a completely different story than what you hear when you attend these meetings and the public is there and the people who care about the airport and use the airport are there. So I just want that in the public record, that there really is a discrepancy. And I think sometimes with bureaucracy and agencies like this, I think the problem is that they think that it will just go away, like they make their decision and the people will just go away because we'll forget. And they adopt an attitude basically of gaslighting their story because it's their story and it's what they want to do. And I think they end up doing it to the extent where they even convince themselves that their story is true and that it's the right thing. The bottom line is, is it's really important to understand, it's their property. They own it. Therefore, they believe they can do what they want to with it, and they can. They're right. Technically, they can. In that regard, we have no legs to stand on when we're talking about the airport. So it's not the Airport Committee's proposal of city ownership that's unreasonable. It's not outlandish, and it's not more than Seward can handle. None of those things are what the point is at the moment. The point here is that some form of transition takeover ownership is the only hope for the future of the airport. Zero of what DOT is offering is what is right for Seward. Zero. So please don't be short-sighted here. If you have, if you don't pass this resolution as it's written unless you can adopt Carols, and I think that's a public process problem because the public hasn't seen that. So I'm hoping you'll schedule a work session or something to figure out what the next step is, but I really hope you will adopt that resolution tonight. And then I'd like to throw a vote for Liz. I think she would be a great addition to council. And I know she had said that she would run again in the fall if she were selected. And there was one more thing, and now I forgot that. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, now you said no one else had signed in. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to council? Hearing and seeing none. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda and consent agenda.
I move for the approval of the agenda and the consent agenda.
Second?
Are there any changes?
I'd like to ask to move items B, three and four. That would be the voting for the candidate for the council vacancy and the swearing-in. I'd like to move those up to item nine before the resolutions, I guess, new business, so we can get that done right away.
Are there any objections? No? I'd like to take Resolution 2020-11, 2020-12, and 2020-15 off the consent agenda, please.
11, 12, and 15?
Yes. Did I cover everyone? Sorry. Are there any other changes? Madam Clerk, can we have a vote, please?
Boarding on tonight's agenda as amended. Butts?
Yes.
Osanga?
Yes.
Bucklon?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
Tonight's agenda and consent agenda are approved. On tonight's consent agenda, you have approved Resolution 2020-010, adopting the Port and Commerce Advisory Board priorities from February 2020 to February 2021. You have approved the January 27, 2020 city council regular meeting minutes, the non-objection to the renewal of liquor license number 177, beverage dispensary tourism for the Breeze Inn. You will issue a letter of support for the recertification of the Prince William Sound Regional Citizens Advisory Council. And you are establishing a procedure for scheduling presentations in keeping with council rules and procedures, Rule 9E, council meetings' agenda. That will become effective immediately.
Great. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next on the agenda is proclamation and awards. The first one, or the one on tonight's agenda is a memorial for John French, Ph.D. John passed away in January. His brother did come up here. He's not in, he doesn't have family here tonight, but we're going to go ahead and read this into the record, and then the clerk's going to mail this to his family. So, "Whereas the Seward City Council is joined together in memoriam to honor the life and loss of Historic Preservation Commissioner John French, Ph.D. And whereas John was a kind and beloved resident of Seward, whose passing will be felt throughout the community for many years to come. And whereas John was devoted to the betterment of Seward, having served on the Historic Preservation Commission for over 12 years and the Prince William Sound Regional Citizens Advisory Council for over 10 years. And whereas John contributed both his professional and personal experience and skills to writing and editing the 2017 Historic Preservation Plan. Whereas John was passionate about preserving the history and memory of the Fort Raymond subdivision and the Jesse Lee home, in whatever form that may take. Now therefore I, Christie Terry, Mayor of the city of Seward, do hereby recognize the commitment and devotion of Dr. John French to the city of Seward and on behalf of the entire community, extend my deepest sympathies to his families and friends." Thank you. And I just want to add a personal note. Even as recently as the end of last year, John attended the Climate Action Plan that Port and Commerce put on, and he was an active participant in that. So he really did care about the community, and we're very sorry to have lost him. So thank you to his family. Next on the agenda is the Borough Assembly Report.
Madam Mayor, council. Glad I made this one. I was wrong with the last one. Sorry, it was Musa. So, been a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to say, what about that Seward Sea Hot Boys Basketball? They've got a game in Valdez this week, and the following two weeks are here, Grace and AC is. I'm watching, they're awesome. They're doing really good. Girls are really improving also. Going to have a good team the next couple of years in girls. So, okay, so get rid of that. I had to. The Borough has passed the resolution for the Jap Creek. So we've passed that. It's contingent on what you guys put in. It's going to be the 450 from the core, 180 from the flood board, 135 from us, and 135 from you. If that's what you agree.
We passed it.
If you don't, then that's...
Yeah, we passed it.
Passed it. So that's been passed. Last time, kind of held it a little bit, but it went through finally. So also, again, the mayor, we had our first meeting with the school board last Tuesday at 1:30, and it went really well. The mayor again stated that he's going to fund to the cap, which is what we all wanted to do last year too, so he's committed to it. And the Borough has also passed, maybe four last, vehicles on the highway in spots. Now, we're going to, it's going to be a bill to the person who owns the vehicle. We are doing it. We already had one example. It just took 24 hours for the guy to get a notice and move to run away because the billing is really expensive for whoever has that vehicle and handing them. We're trying to get rid of all these abandoned vehicles in the Borough, laying outside of road. Can't help with the state, but at least we got the Borough going. So it took, literally took 40 hours to get a vehicle that was abandoned moved. So hopefully, we can get on to Yates Bill and all those things and get things rolling. Budget starts pretty soon, so you're going to see a lot of budget stuff coming in. I'm sure you guys will need to pump that too. So other than that, that's what we had. It was a real, real short meeting. We actually got out of there at 8:00. So I wasn't feeling good during that meeting, but I thought it through, and it was like, yeah, it's a lot longer than it was for me, but it was really short. One of our shores. So if you have any questions for me.
I have a question. So if folks out in our subdivisions outside city limits, if there's an abandoned vehicle they want to address, do they call the troopers? Do they call emergency management? Who do they contact?
No, I think it's on Borough's road. You call the roads department.
Okay.
Dill just left. We lost a great asset. Dill was an awesome guy. He's got a job in Florida. So now they've got another guy working it right now. I don't remember his name, but if you call the roads department, they come right out. Scott's here two, three times a week, and he'll label it and move it right out of there. So if it's on the Borough's road.
It has to...
To state, you have to call the state troops.
Yeah. Okay.
So I don't know how deeply you know into that, but does it have to be on a road? Or can it be on just a side? Can it be dragged up into somebody's property? Would they take care of that?
If it's on somebody else's property, and you go to the property owner, yeah, if you go to the property owner and they want to move, the property owner is responsible for the bill until they collect it from the guy that actually abandoned it there. So there's a search thing, but they did open that up for that because there are a lot of, they did drag them out in the middle of somebody's property in the woods, and the property owner's not in state, comes back and notices there's a camper sitting. We actually have this happening right now. There's a motorhome, basically, sitting on this guy's property that is not going to be able to drag off. It's going to tear apart. So it's going to cost a lot of money, but the owner's kind of responsible for it at first until the owner goes to the Borough to get the money back from the person. But it's mostly Borough roads, or like this one that was just taken away was on a school bus turnaround, so in the Borough. So it has to be Borough roads. State roads are still state, in state, you know how they are. You can still count the vehicles going over the pass.
Great. Are there any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Next on the agenda is city manager's report.
Thank you. I'd first like to apologize for leaving abruptly at the last meeting. I did text the council members and let them know what was going on. I would like to apologize publicly. I did speak with the mayor. The legal RFP has been out, so there's a laydown that you receive this evening. What I'm proposing is, in the RFP, I duplicated the RFP that was used last time. So in Section 72, the selection procedures, it actually spells out that the RFP will be reviewed against the criteria in the scope of services within the RFP. And it says in 72.3 that the Seward City Council and the Seward City Manager will review those proposals. What I'm asking for is two volunteers from the council that would like to participate in that. And then the next step would be, it says the most responsive proposals may be invited to an interview with the selection committee, which I believe is what they did in the last procedure when they did this. There's only three, so last time they only interviewed three. So if, you know, I think it's still good to evaluate the criteria with a group. So I don't know if that's how the council would like to...
I don't have that laid out. Yeah, I believe it was in the packet, or an email.
It was emailed ahead of time.
An email.
I have, I have two.
Yeah, both of them.
So the question is, is how do we want to move forward with the proposals that have been submitted? There's three. We could do a committee of two city council members, two staff members. I'd be interested. I know last time, all the interviews were done in executive session. And, you know, based on our attorney's practice of making sure that her evaluations are done in a public forum, I'd like to see those interviews done in a public forum. I don't know that there's anything that would restrict that, especially based on our current attorney's advice. Councilmember Bucklon?
I had asked the clerk previously how the process was going to work. After hearing from other constituents, I was wondering if this is normal, the process was that there was, it was administration and city council both hiring the attorney firm? Because on most things, we would just do those on our own because those are our employees that we hire.
Well, I did, and the clerk can correct me if I'm wrong. I did some research into the minutes last time, was about 10 years ago in December. There was three meetings. There was three. Well, it was 10 years ago when the Holly's firm, isn't it 10 years ago?
No. They changed hands like five or six years ago. The ownership technically changed.
But did you do interviews during that time?
Yeah.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
How were those?
They backed out of the proposal.
How were those handled?
Good question. I didn't look that up.
The ones I found were all executive session interviews.
They were. I was here. I just do not remember if it was executive session or not, but the entire council was here, and we interviewed them out there because I had to... Yeah. No, we did that. We did that one by one. We brought each one in separately. But it was done in public, I thought. I don't recall if it was public or not. But we didn't allow the others to come in. Right. They were done separately. Sit in with them. Yeah.
Okay.
So I can't speak to what happened because obviously I wasn't here, but this is the same RFP they used in December of 2015. And it spelled out that the city council and city manager would review their proposals, but then it said respondents that they selected would be invited to interview with the selection committee. Now, as to whether or not they did that in that sequence, I don't know. If you want to stick to what we put out in this RFP, which I just copied the former one, and that's what I was, that's why we didn't have the criteria and the scoring, because this doesn't lay that out. That's not the way they did it previously. So it's really up to you at this point.
How do people want to handle this?
So this would be then a smaller committee with administration to select the ones that then would be interviewed?
Interviewed?
Is that what we're suggesting?
Councilmember Bucklon?
I would like the council as a body to review, since we have three candidates and it's not such a large field, I think we should, as a body, review all three proposals.
Councilmember Osanga? Councilmember Butts?
I don't have any objection to that. I'm just, I'm still trying to rack my brain whether this was executive session or not, and I remember doing it, but I just cannot remember.
Yeah. But in any event, if it were to be the whole council, that would mean a special meeting or a work session. Whereas if it were a committee, it would just be a group of people meeting, which would then come back to the whole council anyway. So I'm about 50/50. I'd go either way on that.
It would just create an extra meeting.
Right. Either way, for the people involved or the whole group. It's probably in the whole more fair if the whole group, along with administration, went through them, I guess. So, but now we would have to put on the next, either call a special meeting or put on the next agenda to schedule that because we can't schedule that.
So Madam Clerk, can we set up a special meeting at this? I think we can set a special meeting. Let's look at a calendar and set a special meeting. And then at that meeting, it can actually be a work session. Oh, no, because we might want to come out and direct the interviews. So let's set a special meeting.
Will you make a decision?
We could, because we could, we could decide to not interview all three.
Yeah. Right.
I think we can set a special meeting. Let's look at a calendar and set a special meeting. And then, at that meeting, it can actually be a work session. Oh, no, because we might want to come out and direct the interviews. So, let's set a special meeting.
Will you make a decision after?
We could, because we could, we could decide to not interview all three.
Yeah.
So, let's try for February 24th at 5:00.
Oh, before the meeting, sure.
That'll give us two hours. Or do we want to try for sooner? The problem would be next week, Councilmember Bucklon and I are gone. So, if we have, if we could get the proposals distributed ahead of time...
So, I have them digitally. I can email it to the clerk.
Let's email them to the clerk and then through, to the body. So, we'll have them reviewed ahead of time and be ready to speak to them at 5:00 on the 24th. So, I move to set a special meeting for February 24th at 5:00 p.m.
To review and score the city attorney proposals.
Yes, I'll second that.
Thank you.
A call for a vote?
Yes.
Butz?
Yes.
McLaurin?
Yes.
Osenga?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
You'll have a special meeting.
So, the only two items I still have is, next week, several of us will be in Juneau, which does kind of put a damper on getting packet items ready. And then, the, you're going to request to see who was going to DC in April, I believe you said it was. I didn't know if you had selected the members that are doing that or not. I know we've been sending an email around. No one's been part of that, but...
So, Madam Clerk, the next regular meeting is February 24th. Will that be time for your office to make travel plans for that April...
Yes.
...visit to DC?
Should be.
Okay, so, let's get that. So, Madam Clerk, if you could have that item on the February 24th meeting. Could you put behind that our federal priorities?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Are there any questions for the city manager or his staff?
Doug's right there. Do we have any updates on the water sewer rate study?
Yeah, we talked to him today, or last week again, and Finance Director Stromberger and I will meet with them tomorrow, or Wednesday, and go through getting the details out. So, we're still pushing it to get it, I mean, as quick as we can. There's a, as you're pushing through, we're coming up with some more, and it's just the late start of getting that information to them, but we're getting there, hopefully, really quick here.
Any other questions for the city manager? Councilmember Bucklon?
One more, I think you would know it, too, is the update on the FEMA funding for the Lowell Point Road construction.
Monday, I actually got the paperwork for it, so we can actually do it and bill it. We've got, already released Hamilton. I think they left, they were trying to leave with a barge yesterday, on Sunday, to go get more rock and start right on it. But it just came in the mail. I got yesterday the two, so we can actually, we have our AOD worksheet, which lets us bill it back to them.
Councilmember Bucklon?
One more is the, thank you for helping clear off the snow removal on Third Avenue, but could you explain how the city and the state work together on that project?
Sure. We have a memorandum of agreement that we work with them to remove snow, and we do a little, in the summer, a little bit upkeep on the vegetation on Third Avenue for them. Removing the snow, all we're doing is, if it gets high enough on the sidewalks, about where it just was, they'll pull it to the center, and we'll use our dump trucks and our snow blower to haul it off to the snow dump. In return, the state comes in in the summer and paints all of our yellow and white lines on all of our streets through the whole town. So, that's the trade-off. We don't have a paint truck. They don't have a dump truck and a blower down here right now. That works.
Did that answer your question?
Yep. And then, one more follow-up was, doing a lot of street research lately, I found out that the state grooves their lines, their, into the pavement, and they've increased their lines, life of, the line life of the painting on there, up to possibly 10 years. Is that something that we could do or could be, like, is that possible here?
I've never researched it. I've seen some of the small grooves they put in just to, just to drop the level. I haven't talked to the state guys to say, I mean, you've done the research there. I haven't seen it. I can't imagine it being cheap, but, you know, if it can, if it could actually, I think I still see them painting every year. So, I don't know what the longevity, where the 10 years is, but maybe in parts, it's better, but they normally just run right over it all again and make it because the glass beads wear out, too, that they put in for the reflective. So, I'd be glad to look at it and, you know, talk to the counterparts across the peninsula here and see what they say.
Thank you.
I have a couple of ques... Oh, Councilmember Butz, go ahead.
Oh, it's, I was going to save it for comments later, but one other thing that, too, that I've been looking at for a number of years or two is if, I think the city might want to take a look at, is a number of abandoned poles that we have actually within the city of Seward, whether some old electrical poles or different things like this or two. Some of them are there, and they're abandoned, and if somebody was to hit them or something like this or two. So, I was wondering if somebody could actually take a look at those or two.
I have a question, which this is, shouldn't be city work, but has the borough provided our fourth quarter revenues yet? Do we know? Oh, they have. It would be great if, to get those numbers distributed to council and how that compares to our final budget numbers. And then, I also know that finances is short-staffed, and we have some, obviously, great turnover, but just having those budget books are so helpful, just if we know that those will be out in March or May or something.
It's definitely on the list.
Yeah, just, just as soon as we could. And then, also, just a reminder to administration that on that next February 24th meeting, I know you'll be gone most of next week, but that we'll have the rescheduling for, or the scheduling for our next electric department work session on that meeting. So, and any follow-up to those questions?
And they have been, I have advised the permit.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, great. Any other questions? Great, thank you. Next on the agenda, other reports and presentations. The Prince William Sound Advisory, Regional Citizens Advisory Council Report is included in our packet. Public hearing items, there are none. Oh, is he here? Oh, I'm sorry. Pardon me. Please, come to the dais.
Mayor, some counsel. Robert Shavel is inside the city limits. Privilege and honor to represent the city of Seward at the, yeah, I always, I've got to read it here because it's a tongue twister sometimes, the Prince William Sound Regional Citizens Advisory Council, which I'll refer to as the RCAC. And so, after the Exxon Valdez oil spill, there was federal legislation passed that required, in part, that there be a citizen oversight committee. And so, from what I've seen, they've done an excellent job. The staff does all their due diligence, and so, thank you very much for supporting the letter. Also, the law requires that they be recertified every several, several years by United States Coast Guard. And so, thank you for approving that letter, and I'll answer your questions if you have any.
Is there, other than the letters, are there any support you need from us, or is there any issues that we should be thinking about weighing in on?
Not necessarily. There's, the executive branch of the state's trying to, you know, pass deregulation, but they're not being very specific. And so, the council's concerned about, or the RCAC is concerned about that. Other than that, I can't think of anything specific.
Great. Thank you for bringing a report back to us. We appreciate it.
Thank you. And please be careful out there, slippery.
Oh, yeah.
Driving and walking. Don't want to seem big.
That's good. That's our safety minute.
Sorry.
No offense to the Public Works Director. So, now, we're on to public hearings. There are none. Unfinished business, there are none. New business. First item under new business are vote and approve a qualified candidate to fill the council vacancy with the term to expire October 2020. Counsel, before you, you will have the laydown that was sent by the clerk ahead of time. And Madam Clerk, if you want to just review the recommendation on how to proceed into the record.
So, counsel, we have received applications from three candidates, and I did confirm that they're all registered voters, and they have all signed, completed the candidate declaration, which basically signs a note that they're residents of the city for at least one year. So, those are the qualifications we have. You have ballots in front of you. If, when you start your vote, you'll just take one ballot, vote for one candidate, sign it, and pass it over, and I'll read them aloud. It does take a vote of four to have a candidate put in. And there is one, you do have the ability to nominate from the floor. It's highly unusual, but it's still your, your right to do if you had another additional candidate.
Okay, and thank you, Madam Clerk. Once you do, once we do pass them to you, the person, you know, even if it takes a number of times, once we get four votes, then following that, you'll still need a motion and a second and vote on it.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay. Great. Is there any discussion on this item at the council level? Are we ready to vote? Okay.
So, reading the results from ballot number one, we have one for Kreitz, one for Kreitz, one for Kreitz, and we have one for Demoss. So, you have four votes for Kreitz and one for Demoss.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do you have a motion?
I'll move to appoint Julie Kreitz to fill the council seat to expire October 2020.
Second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Voting to appoint Julie Kreitz. Bucklon?
Yes.
McLaurin?
Yes.
Butz?
Yes.
Osenga?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
Congratulations. You have a new council member.
Next item on the agenda is swearing in seat new council member with a term to expire October 2020.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Julie Kreitz, do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Alaska, and the laws and ordinances of the city of Seward, Alaska, and that I will faithfully and honestly perform the duties of the office of council member of the city council. Congratulations.
Do you have a pen? And then, our welcome has going to be your seat at the dais. Congratulations. Madam Clerk, do we have a recess to get a packet? Or should we get a packet from the hallway?
I can, yeah, we can get a packet for sure. Or...
Can you just run down if you don't mind? We don't need to recess.
Okay. So, next on the agenda is Resolution 202011, authorizing signatures for all city bank accounts and rescinding all previously resolutions in conflict herewith. And that's on page 18 of the packet. Motion? We could get a motion, please?
I move for the approval of Resolution 2020-011.
Is there a second?
Second.
I pulled it off the consent agenda. I don't know that we need an explanation from administration. I think it's well done, other than I wanted to make a motion to strike Sam Hickock, Assistant Finance Director, and put Norm Regis, Harbor Master, in that spot. And if I can have a second, I'll...
Second.
Thank you. I just know that we're probably going to be changing this potentially again soon or as we're looking at different things, so I thought at this time, it would be nice to just have a long-term employee, having them be part of the signers, just for some consistency sake. And so, that would, that's be, that would be why I'm adding that. And we can just call for a vote if there's no discussion.
I'm just kind of, I'm just sort of surprised as to why we might be doing that, so, but I understand the longevity thing, and, but...
I mean, there's not, other than the longevity, I just don't really have a, I think it's just time, just a good opportunity to make sure we have some consistency. We've been changing these quite a bit.
So, and also, in lieu, when I'm not here, historically, I've been asking Norm Regis to fill in as acting city manager. So, that would essentially put that wonderful task of signing everything in person onto Norm.
Isn't that wrong?
Or Doug, or whoever I appoint.
But in this case, we're putting in Norm, not Doug.
Right.
Correct.
Okay, we'll call for a vote.
Voting on the amendment to strike Sam Hickock and replace with Norm Regis. McLaurin?
Yes.
Butz?
Yes.
Kreitz?
Yes.
Osenga?
No.
Bucklon?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
That amendment is approved. Your main motion is back on the floor.
I think we're ready to vote.
Nope.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to amend section two to read, "Any two of the above persons shall have access to, to and full power to remove the contents of and to exchange or surrender the safe deposit boxes rented by the city of Seward."
Oh, I'll second.
I would just like to say that since we're looking at more safety measures with our bank and other processes, that in good interest, it would probably be smart to have two people, a little check and balance to that, to that process.
Councilmember Osenga?
I'm just going to make a comment. This has been passed as written many, many times in the past, over and over again, without any thought to changing anything on it. We went through this spiel the last time this came up, and we spent plenty of time discussing it and trying to amend it then, and we wound up really just basically leaving it the way it was. I think that the, any one or any two of the, when you say any one, it's any one of the four people. If you limit it to any two, then you're actually cutting the power in half. Someone's gone, someone's not here. I don't know. I just don't know that that's really necessary at this point. And it's been approved like this for many times over.
Councilmember Butz?
I'm not sure if you don't, I believe that's what their, what their procedure is, is they have to have two people in order to do that, and then, this is just saying that any one of those four people, but it has to be two people that actually can sign the check or to remove things from the safety deposit boxes.
Yes, our internal controls are such that any transaction has to be approved by two people. You know, it's, also, the resolution is written such that if there was a catastrophic event, say, a large earthquake and a tsunami, and many of the other signers were busy, one person may actually be able to talk to the bank and, and transact some business if they understood the situation and knew what the resolution was, which our bank does, by the way. So, there's that caveat as well.
Okay. I'm just going to speak, too. I appreciate you supporting me, but I'm going to say, I'm very comfortable with the four people at the top, so I'm, I'm going to leave it at one to get in the safety deposit box with the change. I feel better. Any other questions or comments? Call for a vote?
Voting on the amendment to change section two to require two people. McLaurin?
No.
Osenga?
No.
Osenga?
No.
Kreitz?
No.
Bucklon?
Yes.
Butts?
No.
Mayor Terry?
No.
That amendment has failed. The main motion is back on the floor.
Any further discussion or changes? Councilmember Bucklon?
I'd like to make a motion to change Section 3 and strike 1 to 2. "Any two of the above persons shall have the authority to invest city monies with financial institutions as prescribed by the Seward City Code, Chapter 5.15, Investment and Collateralization of Public Funds." And I'll speak to that one as well, even if I don't have a second.
The motion will die for lack of a second. Main motion back on the floor. Madam Clerk?
Voting on the main motion as amended. McClure?
Yes.
Butts?
Yes.
Bucklon?
No.
Osenga?
Yes.
Kreitz?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
That resolution is approved.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Resolution 202012. We could get a motion, please? Oh, go ahead.
Resolution 2020-012 is approving a contract for external audit services with Altman Rogers and Company for the years 2019, 2020, and 2021, and extending the deadline for completion.
I move for the approval of Resolution 2020-012.
Second.
We were very fortunate to receive very, three very good proposals this year. The fact is, any of these audit firms could have done our audit and done a good job. They all, they were all well qualified. We felt that BDO has been with the city for a long time, and perhaps it was time for a fresh, new set of eyes to take a look at things and have a bit of critical look at things and make sure that we're doing everything we ought to. But any one of them could have done it, and we would feel comfortable with any of the audit firms.
Any discussion, Vice Mayor?
I was curious why you removed it from the consent agenda.
I know that there was one small change that we made it to make, and I think Councilmember Bucklon was going to go ahead and do that.
I lost my page.
And that's, sorry, it's page 21.
Yeah, I'm missing 21. I wanted to make an amendment to strike, um, Section 3, to change it to read, "The council waives the requirement for the completion of the audit within 120 days following the close of the first year."
I'll second. Which I, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, just because it's such a long period, it's, I mean, half the year for the first one, which I understand because we're going through changes, but coming back to the next year to have another one that comes back again halfway through the year, and then a third one, a fourth one, and a fifth one possibly, if it's extended, would be quite a long time to wait for the audits on those. So I just wanted to know if it's appropriate, if we can, just give the leeway for the first year and then get back to our regular schedule on the second, third, fourth, and, or possibly fourth and fifth year.
Yes, that would be very appropriate, and that was actually what I intended.
Thank you.
I missed two seconds, I'm sorry.
I did.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Administration. Talking to Councilmember Bucklon, we figured that was actually your intent, so. Councilmember Butts?
So on that motion there too, would we also need to then change with the, with the other part of that one to 160 days following the close of that year also?
Oh, that's the first year.
The first year. So in both of those cases there too, would follow that as a kind of friendly amendment?
In both instances where it says, "Close of the first year," "Close of the first year end," and then that would, I think either or would be fine. So we'll just change it to both. Okay, I think we're ready to vote on the amendment.
Voting on the amendment, Kreitz?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
Osenga?
Yes.
Bucklon?
Yes.
Butts?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
That amendment is approved. Your motion is back.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the main motion? Hearing and seeing none, if we could get a vote?
Voting on the main motion as amended, or the resolution. Butts?
Yes.
Bucklon?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
Osenga?
Yes.
Kreitz?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
That resolution is approved.
Now we're down to item Resolution 2020-013. Madam Clerk, if you could read the title into the minutes.
Resolution 2020-013 is supporting Seward Airport Alternative 2.2 and notifying the State of Alaska Department of Transportation and the Federal Aviation Administration to move ahead with construction.
I'll move for the approval of Resolution 2020-01C.
Second.
And we'll have Administration, please?
Oops, sorry, didn't hear you. So I'm going to start out with, the first resolution is very lengthy and detailed, and I don't know that, you know, it is part of the public record. I'm assuming everyone's read through that. If need be, I can read all of that to you. I don't think that's necessary. So in lieu of that, I'm going to start out in stating that I have talked to the ADOT today and the FAA, and I'll read the first whereas only on the resolution, and that's that they have been in the process of addressing this issue through a large-scale project and have completed their environmental assessment. They have determined to move forward with Project Alternative 2.2. At the last meeting, you asked the city attorney to investigate an injunction. I don't, it's in the packet, but she did investigate that. I can read that if you'd like to. Basically, in short, the city does not have an ownership or leasehold interest in the property, and DOT has complied with the notice provisions regarding the airport, so it doesn't look like there's any feasibility to file an injunction. And so instead of going through, there's a lot of details here, and I have a lot of information I can explain. I'll explain the intent, and then I'll explain the fiscal note, so that I don't have to go through all the details. If you want me to, I can. So the intent, I'll also start out by saying, when I first started, the assistant city manager and I sent the governor and DOT and the FAA support letters for 1.1. That was kind of the outline thing we felt was the direction to go, which really kind of took away my neutrality by leaning towards that option. So in lieu of that, the intent from council, Administration would like to know how to proceed with the endorsed airport project. If you sign the resolution that's in your packet, the council can elect to sign either of the resolutions or none, or both of them if they so choose, or to give us a different directive. So let me walk you through what we have in front of you. So the first resolution before you is to endorse the currently funded and endorsed Alternative 2.2 project that the state is proceeding with. That has no fiscal or financial contract on the city. So the FAA and DOT, based on their environmental assessment, have both determined to move forward with that alternative. The, I called today, the Fonzie is not completed, which is not about happy days. The Fonzie is a finding of non-significant impact. Both entities told me they could not do that with the alternatives other than 2.2. So that's, you know, all the other options. And this is, you know, I'm trying just to portray what I'm told. This isn't a finding of mine, this is what I'm being told by the, in the packet, you also have the email from the assistant director from the Department of Transportation. That's where the resolution was drafted, from his comments. So, just so you're aware. So if you approve the first resolution, you would be supporting what the state is actively doing, that we cannot legally or financially stop them from doing. You don't have to support that or do that option, so I would recommend you take action on that motion. The second thing would be, if you look at the second resolution, it details, the entire time we've met with my staff, several of the council, previous council, the DOT has always said that we'll build a long runway. The problem is that they'll only build 3,300 with the FAA funding. So if you want a 4,000-foot runway, they want the city to write a check, to sign an MOU, and you can build the long runway. That has a huge financial impact on the citizens of our community. I feel that, you know, my recommendation would be, if that's something you feel strongly about, you should ask the voters. So I would direct the clerk to have an election to determine if we want to put ourselves in that position. That again is another alternative and an option. The third alternative would be, first of all, no action or motion is required. The state is proceeding, so if we don't send them anything, if we don't notify them of anything, it's going to continue on the path that it's going. If you support it, obviously that looks like the city's behind the project that's happening. If you choose to do the other alternative, in your packet, I outlined what the estimates were from 2015. Today's dollars, you're looking at 10 to 11 million dollars plus maintenance and operating in perpetuity. So that's a significant amount of money. We're not in a financial position to write a check for that, and I don't know that we could make that happen before October. We might be able to, maybe. Never say impossible, but feasible, probably not. So in lieu of those alternatives and options, I'd be happy to try to answer questions. I think most of the data and information is laid out, but the options are really in your hands to determine. Administration is charged with the budget and staffing. Our current staffing and finances are to give you recommendations on the financial status, not whether the alternatives are good or bad. It's pretty windy, but...
So council discussion? Councilmember Butts?
So, kind of, I don't know, that was a little, but just started this up there too. So you feel, and your staff feels, that 2.2 is going to go no matter what?
The state has told us that they are, they have deemed that Alternative 2.2 is the action that they're going to develop. That won't happen until the Fonzie is signed and the NEPA is finalized, which was supposed to have happened last week. That has not happened yet. There's still two or three small significant items that they're writing responses to the comments they have from the community. I'm told that that's, regardless, that they're going to do the Fonzie towards this alternative. They're not going to go back and visit the other alternatives. That's, that's what I was told. I can't, I'm only passing on what I've been informed. So the FAA and the DOT are going to build 2.2. That's, that's basically where it lies. That's what I was told today.
Vice Mayor, Clerk?
But what you're also saying, I'm just reiterating it, I guess, is if we vote no on this resolution or the next one, that really doesn't change anything that they're going to do.
Correct.
But that also...
They don't need our blessing, so to speak, on any of the work that we're doing here tonight.
Okay, and let me just also reiterate that our attorneys have said that it's probably not feasible to take them to court to demand what was suggested before either.
Yeah, her statement's in there, I can read it, but it's...
I just wanted that said again.
But yes, she sees no legal opinion that says that if we did that, we would likely not venture, we'd spend a lot of money, but we wouldn't likely get any judge to uphold that decision based on fact.
So I have a question as far as if we're going to afford 2.2, can the DOT go ahead and do that, and then could we still bring another motion later to bring it to a special election or a regular election? If this community does want to extend the runway, is that an option after the fact that they do the work of 2.2?
So that's a, that's a good lead-in question. They say that if the airport capacity and landings increases, so if we exceed the current threshold beyond the 3,300-foot capacity, that's all they can fund right now. If we have a lot of aircraft, smaller aircraft, and the capacity's enhanced, the FAA money can go to pay for the larger, more extended runway. The resolution here is just stating that you could build that additional capacity by just funding it, and they've always said, you know, we'll build the long runway, you just have to pay for the other portion. The other portion is a significant amount, that if we don't ever reach that threshold, the FAA funding may or may not be triggered, so.
Councilmember Butts?
Help answer your question.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to suspend the rules at this time and actually ask for some comments from our ad hoc committee.
I want to make sure that we're done discussing up here first. Are there any other questions for Administration? You know, I have some comments. I'm fine to suspend the rules for the chair. I mean, I have my own comments if we're, if you have a question for the ad hoc committee chair.
Ash, you do have questions for the chair.
So if the council's willing, we'll suspend the rules, and I don't know if Chair Jaffa would be willing to answer questions from the board, from the council. Is there any objection to suspending the rules? Thank you. Councilmember Butts? You can stand at the dice, thank you, or at the podium. Councilmember Butts?
So with, what we have before us with these, with these resolutions, is it the committee's opinion also that we will, that 2.2 is still going to go through no matter what?
I can't read the mind or the will of Department of Transportation. They have, they have indicated that that's their, their intent to move forward. They don't intend to listen to reason from anyone else for the attempt to get the attorney, get their attention through an injunction was to gain cooperation. So if you're asking me, do I think it's going to be built? I don't think it will be built. I think there will be a opposition that'll stop it. Do I think the, the action of anything at the council tonight will be that thing that stops it? Probably not. But if you, I do have an opinion about what you are going to do. If you, if you acquiesce to what DOT is saying, you're agreeing to cede valuable property from the Resurrection River, not to improve the protection of Seward infrastructure. You are, you are saying that DOT knows what's best for the City of Seward, and all of the effort that citizen groups and volunteers and attendees to meetings have given is ignored, worthless, without merit, and I think that is plainly the message that you're sending. The city has been on record, PACD has been on record, the ad hoc committee has been on record, every attended meeting, I just went back through 10 years of meetings today, 882 pages, and I hit them all. But I read Mayor Terry's comments, she'd been in since the beginning. Former manager Hunt, assistant manager Long, had clear statements about it. Interim manager Bridges did not understand the situation, excepted the idea that 4,000-foot runway was equal to a 4,200-foot runway. It's not. So 2.2, with, would maybe offer 4,000 feet later, is not the same as the existing 4,200 feet. It's not the same. So if you, if you pass this resolution, you're saying goodbye to 4,200 feet. You're saying goodbye to future C-13s. You're saying goodbye to a whole class of aircraft. The opportunity to build 4,000 feet, I just drove it this afternoon, extending the runway to 4,000 feet will put you in the water. Now, does anybody here think that's going to happen? I think there are probably people in this community that would oppose that with their last breath. So approving 2.2 is a death knell for a 4,200-foot or, or a runway that's equal to what we have now. Building 3,300 feet, building with the FAA's money, I understand that. If we, if we could get an actual teaming agreement, and the manager has put in the packet a copy of a form, of a format, of a blank opportunity for a MOA or the equal, that has some optimism, it's offering some hope that there is some reason for DOT to talk. If you pass this motion tonight, either one of them, DOT will accept that as a stamp of approval on their bad action. So will they, will they listen to what you do, what you say? I would hope, I would hope so. You know, we're not... You know, we're not without Alex. But I think the bigger point is what are you saying for the city of Seward? You're speaking for the city of Seward. Do you expect, accept what DOT is putting down here? And I think the manager is presenting what DOT is giving him. I think with a little bit longer experience here, it might be a little different story. How it looks, I don't know. So Counselor Member Buck, I'm not sure that I can answer the question adequately.
Any more questions for the chair of the ad hoc committee? Thank you, Chairman Jaffa. Okay, we'll be back on the record. I have a question.
For someone that's read this more, I mean, I could pull it up, but does the plan that they're proposing, as I recall, it involves somehow reinforcing the long runway as a dyke against the river? Was that true as part of what they're proposing?
So I think the dialogue and meetings and input that we've had, Norm, several of our staff have attended those meetings, I believe that they added to keep the armored piece of the river to protect other people's property as well as the airport from washing out, and I think originally that was not part of the original scope. So I think that was, you know, kind of a little bit of our pushback kept that in place. They do intend to take the tarmac off of the top of the runway and to armor the rock to keep it kind of like what you think of like with our harbor, that type of an effort.
Counselor Member Buck?
I want to thank the city manager for all the hard work that he's done in following up the DOT and the FAA. I know there's a lot of different opinions and ideas on what has happened, but we have already voted as a body to support 2.2, so, or I'm sorry, 1.1, as our legislative priorities. So going back on that now would basically put us in conflict with what we are asking from our lobbyists and what we had sent to, what we wanted to see in Seward. So I do believe that it should go to a vote of the people. I don't think that we should go on with like a whole new resolution, and I don't support 2020-013 as it is, so.
There's no further comments, I'll make a few comments. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Well, I have a comment slash question. The vote of the people ultimately should be, I think, is if we want to pay a lot of money for an airport, and the question is, are these the people that are within the city limits? Because that's what we mandate, right? So all those pilots that don't live in the city limits, I mean, how would we, I mean, we would only be asking the city, citizens of the city of Seward to decide this massive amount of money, and so that creates a whole new issue in my mind, you know?
So I think to be clear, they're proceeding with 2.2. They're saying that we could create an MOU and come up with the funding to get the full 4,000. That financial impact would be on citizens of Seward, mill levies, the taxation, using our reserve funds. So it has an adverse impact, and I'm just saying, as the fiduciary person that gives you advice on that, I think you should ask your voters, I wouldn't want to, I can't tell you as council members, you shouldn't decide that, but I think it's critical enough of an issue that the people should be asked if they should incur that expense.
Just a quick follow-up then, because this is presumably moving along, that's why you're suggesting a special election, the expense of that to actually find out if this is what the people want to pay for?
Which that's the following resolution.
Right, right, I know, but I'm trying to put it all in a big context.
So the third option is similar to the resolution you're seeing being presented by the ad hoc committee, and that is airship, you know, airport ownership of the city. Right now, there's 23 roughly million dollars paying for 2.2 that is funded, it is being obligated, it will be constructed before the end of 2021. The other alternative would be if we seek the long runway in the current situation, that would require fighting the currently completed EA through probably an EIS, maybe not, but likely an EIS, experts challenging the data and facts which determine the EA to be non-impactual. You're kind of fighting that battle that they've already proven exists, and whether that's accurate or not is to be determined, but then you won't have that funding mechanism. The $23 million is appropriated for this fiscal year through the legislative process, and even if the state backs out, that may not be there in the future. So it's not like a savings account that we can just push it. So you may actually end up fighting to own the property through the state, which would be a fight in of itself, and then to build this project that they're doing for $23 million, it could be a lot more significantly expensive than the $23 million to do that other alternative. And that's, I don't know what that looks like, I just need to present that to you for you to make a decision on where to go with it.
Counselor Member Buck?
So if we were to not pass this resolution, and then we continued on with trying to, you know, take ownership of the airport, we would lose this money that they have set aside for 2.2?
So that federal money is through, so that this match right now, there's 9%, I believe, match from DOT, and the rest of the money comes from FAA. So just the match money alone is 9% of the 23 million that the state's paying. That funding mechanism is not guaranteed, it's a, through the AIS, the Airport Improvement AIP, they vet for that with all the airports in Alaska and nationally, and right now it's slated to be completed. The funding is there, and in the explanation, it's not known if or when that funding mechanism could come along. So, and they did talk to me today about being a single airport, a single owner airport has its challenges because a city ownership is a lot different than a borough or state-owned airport in their process. I don't have much knowledge about what that looks like.
So I'd like to make some comments. A couple things. I am thankful to have this resolution before us because I think if we vote something down, that sends the same message as passing something. I'd also like, in my opinion, we're not there yet with any final decisions, but whatever we need to do, we need to make sure that we do no harm, because I think there's still some options out there. I believe that 1.1, that long runway that we currently have, is still a possibility. I think depending on how these resolutions work out tonight, I'd like to have counsel have a work session with the Flood Board and start a Resurrection River project and work with Army Corps of Engineers, maybe even on an emergency basis, just to get that river moved. Because regardless of how this turns out, that river needs to be moved and our airport needs to be protected. If this, I'd like us to have a further discussion, because if this resolution does get voted down, Councilmember Bucklon and I will be in Juneau next week. So we need to make sure that we're on point and that we're in agreement with the rest of council. I don't want to be in Juneau saying one thing, coming back and council disagreeing. So if we want to have a Resurrection River project that we need to go down and communicate with our legislators about, if we need to go down and say we still want to keep 1.1, the problem with 2.2 is that it will cross our long runway, which is fine, there's runways that cross around the nation, but they also have a tower, and we won't have a tower. So at this point, regardless of what we do tonight, DOT is going to be moving forward, so we just need to make sure that we're doing no harm and not getting ourselves in a box that unless we are done with thinking that we will do something with the long runway. So if this votes down tonight, maybe we can have a couple minutes now while we're still under this resolution for folks to tell us what message we're supposed to take to Juneau, if anyone has any comments.
I think that's...
Counselor Member Buck?
What Counselor Member Bucklon was saying was that we've already made our recommendation, we've already made our support of what we want to do there too. So I think, yeah, I think we already have that kind of, that voice already of where we want to go with this.
So in the state priorities, the way it reads, is 8.1 million for the Alaska Department of Transportation to repair and restore the existing 13.31 in order to accommodate larger aircraft and provide effective disaster response.
Counselor, Vice Mayor?
So like you said, it would, I mean, that would be the ultimate, to have both runways, I guess. I mean, let them build the one at their expense, and then as long as we don't, you know, if we need a tower or not, but then to still push for the long runway because we're going to be pushing for the river.
Realignment.
Well, realignment, or, I mean, I don't think a dyke's going to hold it, so yeah, realignment, that's reasonable, I think.
So the only other question I have to the council is, do we want to push to have the other aspects of the project and have them, you know, fix what needs to be fixed with our short runway, get our lighting and fencing, and ask them for those monies to be allocated? That would be splitting the baby and moving forward. Counselor Member Bucklon?
Going back and forth and around and around on it, I just feel like, and you said it earlier, was if the river is not moved and if the mitigation of the flood is not, or the river is, no mitigation happens from that, it's, water is going to keep taking away from it. So it's going to go to the new wall and over the existing, the old runway, over that into the wall that they're building now. So if we're not staying strong on this one thing, I think, and we're not going to, you know, create a river committee or a board or something, it's still going to reclaim it, you know? I feel like if we're not staying at that long runway and building up something, a dyke, or moving the river, controlling the flow from there, it's just still going to eat away at the airport.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor McClure?
I don't have any.
Counselor Member...
So I guess I'm just getting kind of, we're getting kind of a bunch of different things clustered into this, where I'm not sure what the timing is for all this, because if they're ready to start, I mean, and there's nothing we can do according to what our attorney's advice is as far as injunction, then what are we really doing here? We're fighting for a longer runway, but we're not going to be able to, we don't want to stop, we don't want to stop them on 2.2, let them improve that, and then work for a longer runway next? Or I'm trying to figure out what the timeline is here, because we've got a bunch of stuff going all at the same speed toward each other, and I don't know where we're, I don't know where we're trying to end up here. So the explanation I got was they're doing 2.2 regardless if we say anything, fight, and we don't have a legal right to stop them. They're going to build the 3,300 feet because that gives us fixed wing medical extraction, which we don't have when the long runway is flooded. The other runway is too short for that. So they're building a 3,300 foot because that's what the funding federally will allow at this point due to our usage. There's a lot of arguments around that. I don't think it's a piecemeal, we want this, we want that, it's, they're doing that. If we want to build a 4,000-foot runway, we need to get a check to them and the MOU before September, which I don't think is feasible, but that's why the urgency with the voters, because they want a check. They don't want, we can fund it, we can give you money, and it has nothing to do with the 1.1 alternative. This is 2.2 only, and I'm just presenting it how they presented it to me.
The 4,000 feet is the additional footage to the new runway.
To the, correct.
So, just a question then, so what, and I don't know if you said this, you might have, what dollar amount is that then?
So Ron Long, and when they looked at that in 2015, on the other long runway, that was about 8.1 millions. Roughly, those dollars are four years old. Some of our projects from that year are three or four times as much, so I would guess at least $10 to $12 million.
That's to extend the runway.
To get 700 more feet.
So that's the part with, excuse me for interrupting, so that's the part with our state priorities where it says 8.1 million? I don't think that number's accurate. That 1.1 runway is going to be a lot more than 8.1. It could be if we could utilize 3,300 feet of the FAA money and then for us to pay the remaining potentially.
So they, in speaking to them, they said, here's an MOU, if you act quickly, we can build a 4,000-foot runway today with your additional monies. They're not talking about 1.1 location. Does that make sense?
They're talking about the 2.1.
Yeah, that figure's probably way low for the new construction.
Counselor...
No, that's what I was going to say, that's with the runway they're going to build, extending it, not the existing long runway, or fixing it, right?
That would need anchor rock and...
And on 2.2, if you get, you know, the 250-plus movements in the future, if the capacity and the usage exceeds the normal demands, you could get additional FAA money to build the longer extension. There's some contestation as to, you know, it's at the end, there's, the habitat thing is, irregardless of where you do it, there's going to be habitat issues, that's part of the environmental. They recognize that, they spoke to that today, but...
And I might just say again, if we fail this resolution, that it has no impact on what DOT is doing at this point. But what it does is it gives us the ability to not, you know, there's still the options to moving the river, and you're right. And so Counselor Member Senga, you're exactly right, we're in this knot of a situation that we're here after, you know, we've been pressured into this after a number of years, and there's just too many things to take care of where we could have started working on this five years ago and moved the river by now. So we're at a junction where there's lots of other issues we still need to address.
And they spoke to me, this being the DOT, that, hey, let them build the $23 million of fencing, the alignments, all of the upgrades for code, and if we don't like it, when that's done, we could, you know, it doesn't preclude us from saying, oh, let's get involved with the airport project, and let's take things on, and let's build another runway, and let's do something at that point. It's kind of like that, the money exists for the alternative that they vetted, and no matter how hard we fight, they're not going to change that target.
Is there any further discussion?
So just to clarify, for Counselor Member Bucklon and I, if we go down, if this fails, we can still talk about other options with our legislators? Is there anyone that has any issues with that? Okay. I think we're ready to call for the vote.
Voting on the approval of Resolution 20-013. Buck?
No.
Bucklon?
No.
Kreitz?
No.
McClure?
No.
O'Senga?
No.
Mayor Terry?
No.
That resolution has failed.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Resolution 2020-014. Madam Clerk, could you read that into the agenda or into the minutes, please?
Resolution 2020-014 is directing the city clerk to conduct a special election to determine if Seward voters wish to fund an additional extension from 3,300 feet to 4,000 feet of the Seward Airport runway in conjunction with approved alternative 2.2.
I move for the approval of Resolution 2020-014.
Second.
So we'll turn to administration. I feel like we, I don't even know if there's further questions, or I think it was helpful to have this as the next resolution. Are there any further questions or looking to administration? We were going to... Go ahead, Counselor Member O'Senga.
I was just going to ask, it says in conjunction with approved alternative 2.2, is that, we didn't just approve that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think that we're ready to call for a vote.
Voting on Resolution 20-014. O'Senga?
No.
Bucklon?
No.
Buck?
No.
Kreitz?
No.
McClure?
No.
Mayor Terry?
No.
That resolution has failed.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Resolution 2020-015.
Resolution 2020-015 is amending the city council rules of procedure, Rule 26, Order of Business, and Rule 27, addressing the council by the public.
I move for the approval of Resolution 2020-015.
Second.
So I pulled this off the consent agenda. The city clerk did an excellent job. I think that we've all been frustrated as a council to not get to the meat of what we really should be discussing until later in the evening. So we're working on ways to prioritize presentations and get that first section tightened up so that we start to look at things, you know, tonight was a good example, that we were able to really start tackling things when we're all fresh and when the public's still here. I did have one change to make, though. all fresh and when the public's still here. I did have one change to make, though. So if you could turn to page 49 of your agenda, I'm sorry, of your packet, Chamber of Commerce Report C, I make a motion that that item gets moved down to F5.
I'll second that.
And again, so just looking at special orders, presentations, and reports, it's proclamations and awards, those are generated from our body, Borough Assembly Report, and other legislative body, and then City Managers' Attorneys' Report. I feel like it, City of Commerce Report has more to do with our boards, commissions, you know, they're a contractor. So that's why I wanted to move them down to F5.
May I just ask a question? The Chamber of Commerce is, that's totally, that's totally fine, I mean, with moving it, but I just wanna make sure the frequency, did you intend to change the frequency? Cause they're on once a month standard.
No, standard's fine.
Great.
So I think we're ready to vote.
I just have one question. Is there a limit on reports? It's just presentations is two, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Vice Mayor?
Speaking to that, when, I mean, I was part of the discussion about this, we're reviewing the reports not being a 10-minute presentation. The reports are, as it says here, a written report with maybe a three-minute overview. So, so we get away from the four presentation slash reports that we have had, and so, anyway.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Voting on the amendment to move the Chamber of Commerce Report to public reports and announcements. Bucklon?
Yes.
Kreitz?
Yes.
Butts?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
Osanga?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
That amendment is approved.
I have one more amendment to make. So under F, the parenthetical sentence, I move to strike, council may ask questions, and then have it read, there is no speaking time. Reportees can choose to speak during citizen comments.
Thank you, that's what we intended. I'll second that.
So again, so any of these Port and Commerce Advisory Board, Planning and Zoning Commission, Historic Preservation, Flood Service Area Board, Chamber of Commerce Report, they can take the opportunity to speak during public comments, have three minutes. And so during that time, if we have a question, we can ask them a question during that time. So again, the motion will be strike, council may ask questions, and substitute it with reportees can choose to speak during citizen comments.
If you don't mind, I just would like to say, that's not, if it's an item on the agenda, as it would be under reports, having a discussion during citizen comments is on an item related to later in the agenda. Doesn't make sense.
Well, but, so it's like when we have reports, you know, people could speak to reports at the end during citizen comments as a citizen.
At the end, because the item of business is already...
No, no, I mean, something further in the agenda, they would speak to it during citizen comments. It does make sense. So what we're trying to do is so they can have an opportunity to speak. Clearly, their opportunity to speak is during public comments. Or, or if they could just have a written report. But if they wanna speak, it can be during public comments. What's restricting them from speaking during public comments?
You said council can ask them questions about the report, which is an item on the agenda later in the meeting. That's, that's all I'm trying to point out. The disparity.
I don't see the disparity.
Could you state what you said again, please?
So, there is no speaking time, and cross out council may ask questions. I mean, I feel like council can ask questions at any time, but we need to direct these folks to reportees can choose to speak during citizen comments. I mean, I don't think it needs to say on the agenda that we can ask questions, cause we can always suspend the rules and ask questions.
So then you're referring to the citizen comment time at the beginning?
Yes.
Or at the end, or just the beginning?
I was speaking to, so, so the concern would be at the Planning and Zoning Commission, if they had a report in here and they wanted to speak to it, there just needs to be some way that they're told that they can speak during public comments, at the beginning.
At the beginning, thank you.
Councilmember Bucklon?
So, there's 36 minutes of total speaking time. That would actually take away from public speaking time, because you'd move your report people in there. So I'm not in favor of that, just because it would, it would remove total speaking time for the public. Am I getting that correct? So, I see what you're saying, but I think it's removing time from the public to give comments.
So just ask the clerk, has there ever been an instant where there's been too much public speaking time?
We have run, it's very rare that we run into 36 minutes, yeah.
I see. I, okay.
So, and we just clarified, too, that it's not the total time for the agenda, it's actual speaking time. Councilmember Bucklon?
I'm, I understand what you're saying. I just feel like it's still cutting, even if it were, you know, hypothetically, that we commonly don't, and I understand the goal is trying to condense the meeting. I respect that and I understand that. I just feel that it is taking away from the public's opportunity if they wish to have 36 minutes of speaking time, that instead of being in a separate part where it wouldn't be subject to that 36 minutes, where it would normally be, it would cut out, you know, three minutes from the public's time to speak, and I think that is valuable.
Okay, can I, I'll get to you. I just wanna say then what we need to do is add speaking time during this, cause right now that would be their only speaking time. Can I go back to Councilmember Osanga, had his hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, are we talking, it says, reports must be submitted to the city clerk no later, and so you're talking about just a written report?
Mm-hmm.
Not somebody giving a report?
No.
It's actually just a written report? Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify.
Councilman, or Vice Mayor?
Would it be time to amend the amendment, or do we wanna...
We should maybe vote it down and start fresh, cause I'll have an additional one here. So we can vote.
So the amendment on the floor is the reportees can speak during citizen comments. Butts?
No.
Kreitz?
Yes.
Osanga?
No.
McClure?
No.
Bucklon?
No.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
That amendment has failed.
Okay, so right now we're back to there's no speaking time, council may ask questions. Vice Mayor?
So, I'd like to amend it to say, to, to strike, there is no speaking time, council may ask questions, and put in, five minutes will be allowed for reports. Because we're not, no, I need a second before I...
I'll second for discussion.
May I just speak to that? They need to say something sometime. We don't wanna take away from the beginning. We're not gonna have all five reports on any one night. Five minutes would be adequate if they've submitted their written report, and that accomplishes at least my goal of scrunching things down a little bit. So, rather than give them an unlimited time, since presentations get 10 minutes, I'll suggest five minutes speaking time. And of course, council may ask questions, cause we could do that anyway. I don't think we need that in there.
Councilmember...
So now we're going from written reports to somebody standing up here and giving us a report orally, or both? I mean, I guess I was just kinda confused, cause I always thought if we had gotten reports, we were always able to kinda, at the end of a report, even if it was just written, we were able to discuss it if you wanted to. So I guess I'm just kinda confused.
So you're saying no speaking time?
Well...
That's, I mean, I'm just asking.
Well, no, and I understand your question, cause the way it's written, it seems to me like this is just a written report that somebody wrote and turned in, not necessarily they're standing up there waiting to discuss it.
Okay.
Is what I'm saying, and so that's why I'm saying, just a little confused.
So I'll, I'll just say, so what was happening was people would submit reports and then do a 10-minute presentation.
Or more.
Or more. So now people can submit reports, you know, I was thinking they could, you know, say their piece during public hearing comments. I hear the concern, so, and I would say Vice Mayor McClure is correct, you know, Port and Commerce Advisory Board, they're here four times a year, P&amp;Z four times a year, Historic Press four times a year, you know, so it won't, we won't have 25 minutes of reports at every meeting. Councilmember Bucklon?
It's my understanding, though, that they don't have to stand up and give their report.
Correct, right.
They can submit a written report and decline to speak. So, I think five minutes is appropriate for a report if they need to, and I think 10 is too much, because most of the time people go over that, so I would support the amendment to five minutes.
Any further discussion? Call for the vote?
Voting on the amendment to allow five minutes speaking time. Kreitz?
Yes.
Bucklon?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
Butts?
Yes.
Osanga?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
That amendment is approved.
Any further discussion with this resolution? I might just point out, so Councilmember Bucklon, to your earlier concerns, so this does address that to provide, make sure that there's more speaking time, and so shall three minutes per person and shall be limited to a total speaking time of not more than 36 minutes. So that does help clarify to make sure that there is more speaking time for public comments.
Right.
I think we're ready for a vote on the resolution.
Voting on Resolution 20-015 as amended. Osanga?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
Butts?
Yes.
Kreitz?
Yes.
Bucklon?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
That resolution is approved.
Next on the agenda is other new business items. Update on a work session scheduled February 12, 2020 to review and discuss the capital improvement plan, priorities, and ongoing projects and goals list. City Manager?
So you should also have a laydown on this, I hope. Did you have that? So I did cancel that. I'm, I'm sorry to delay. I think it's a critically important issue that I would like to get put together well. The new finance director, Tony's been very helpful and I have a lot of confidence in where we're going with these things. However, the timeline is being short, I, I have met out, we met and reached out to the group that has been fairly significant in having fruition of projects here in the city. So that's Roe, Sarah, and Judy. Most of you know them individually. And so I'm just trying to see what kind of proposal they have for kinda doing the facilitation for this piece. I know that we wanna kinda recommend that we do an overall evaluation of all of the assets and what it costs for rehabilitation versus construction. And I think it's just gonna take some vetting of that to the community and the public to kinda package that up nicely. And I think that they bring those assets to the table. To be honest, that I feel like staff presenting it is kind of a conflict with the community and the board in trying to convey information, whereas, you know, they are strategists, they work on these types of initiatives, and they have that diplomacy to do the consensus building, the streamlined funding engagement. They work with our lobbyists. So that's, that's where I'm headed with this. I don't have a timeline. I would rather get it packaged together and bring it back ready to vet, rather than set an arbitrary date. I don't know that that is gonna be in the short future. I know finance is really encumbered right now with a lot of things, hiring some staff, just the things on our, the audit, starting right around the corner. So I wanna make sure we vet this properly. I don't wanna just throw something out and we throw a dart at it and say, these are our top priorities. And, and so I would ask that you be a little bit patient. I, I know that timelines and keeping us accountable is critical, but I also feel like developing this properly and assembling it for something that's gonna be well-vetted in the community with outreach and participation by both the citizens and the council is something I would rather see than just a presentation or going through a, an evolution. So I would ask what your thoughts are on that and...
Council? Gosh. I'll, I'll start with a couple comments. I think it's a good idea because I think not only presenting what the projects are, but perhaps the associated costs and associated planning. I do have some concerns, however, that we are now in February, you know, March is hot on our heels, then April, by May, the whole community is out doing what they're supposed to be doing, even in April. So we're kinda losing our window to really get ahold of the community and start working on this. I'm also interested in how much that they're proposing.
Right, right.
To help us with all of this, which I think that firm is, I think having someone as a third-party help is amazing. I think we need to watch the cost and also watch the timing. Like, I'd even like to see them develop some Survey Monkeys, you know, you know, everyone wanted a library, and you know, the few years after that was built, there was a lot of consternation on how much that cost. So I'd like to have that ironed out before we move forward with some projects. I also think that there's some timeline issues, like we need to make a decision on the heat pump project. Like, there's some critical things that are coming fast upon us. Councilmember Bucklon?
I know that this is, I am also concerned about the cost as well. On the last two meetings ago, we had made recommendations that possibly Jen Leahy or David Payton could participate in this, and maybe add a cost savings to us, to the city, because they were local here. I don't know if we've reached out to them or asked them if they could participate in this process, if they were interested. I don't know if we're willing to get some direction on maybe seeing some other possibilities for this, rather than hiring a firm and see if we can do this, you know, with some local people. I know that it, there is some staffing issues. So I'm not sure what the solution would be on that, if we could, and I also don't wanna be hung up as well, so.
So, so you do have good points. I mean, obviously, Andy Bacon and the Heat Loop Project is 90% engineered, so the costs there are $130,000. We're into that piece. That's gonna have to come back to council, be presented as a standalone concept. I think it makes sense to know what our big-picture facility vision looks like. I don't think that that will be ready in the near future. Finance is challenged because we have the wage study where I need their input to, it's ready to roll forward, but there's a lot of work that goes into putting together the final numbers to present to you, and that's, you know, they also have the work that Doug's working on, and it's like these things are all bottlenecked together, and I can't, you can't, I can't expect to put that pressure on a few individuals. My, my thought process is, the CIP is a long-reaching, long-term issue for the community. The stuff that needs to be vetted out is, do we fix the roof on the firehouse? Do we spend, I mean, obviously, like windows, major repairs, obviously that can be put off until we do the CIP work. I think the department heads can definitely get together and say, here's our short-term, critical CIP needs, and we can evaluate just those before we do this bigger hole and tailing process. But I, but I do like, it kind of felt good to have third parties say, oh, that's what we do, we vet this, we, instead, it takes that burden off of administration, and it really makes it more of a public process, which is what I feel the community and this council's asking for. They, they did feel shocked because the last time they worked with the city, the spending caps were $200,000, not the 50 and not the current 30. I really want to utilize them in that lower range, big-picture evolution, maybe if it works out and it's funded, maybe go further. But at this point, just the smaller, get that critical and kinda roll that out.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I agree with, you know, keeping the cost down because they can be very pricey, but I like what Tony says about using, you know, locals, but what these people do is exactly what we need for them to do, and they've got some expertise in that kind of planning that perhaps others might not. And, I mean, I, I can tell you, based on working with them on other projects, I guess.
Councilmember Butts?
So, do we have any kind of suggested timeline of when we're gonna come back for this work session?
So, I mean, the bigger, this, this piece of the CIP, not the immediate needs, I really think that that could be a September, fall type of a timeline, cause, you know, we're not gonna build a new city hall or refurbish this one this year. I mean, those are the, but we need estimates and work done to get the critical numbers on, you know, what does it cost for all, you know, take, take a master spreadsheet we have with the new finance director, what does the whole picture look like? with the new finance director, what does the whole picture look like, all vetted out? That doesn't mean that the community and the council are going to say, "Yeah, we need to move everything somewhere or build it all new." But at least if you know, you can make more informed decisions, and that cost-effectiveness says, speaks for itself versus just having, "Oh, well, we think it costs this, we assume it costs the fire building, you know, our estimates on that are five years old." That's not accurate. All of this work that we've done historically is good work, but none of it's accurate in today's needs. So, that effort we did is really money that we've spent, and I'd rather do a holistic, get the current whole picture and prioritize that and get it done. But I feel like having these individuals vet that gives it a lot more credibility and openness to the process.
I was just going to say, I would rather have community input when people are given something to look at with numbers and possibilities that then they can discuss instead of community input, which we've done before where we're saying, "Well, what do you want?" And then people say what they want, but there's no reality. So, I don't want to postpone this, but I think that makes more sense to wait until we've got something that we can actually present to people, and then, you know, it just makes more sense, I think, to wait a bit.
Councilmember Buds?
So, the other question I have, then, is, this is really not going to upset where we're at right now with our legislative priorities for your trip coming up there, too. We're still on track with what we have there, too. This is not, I didn't even think with this meeting we were going to change those at all.
No, I think this is just with the CIP list that we put in.
And I think individually, all those projects are in there, but the big picture of what are we doing first, what, how does, I think that's critical to know, you know, what is it going to look like for the long term? And so, instead of piecemealing it and doing project here, project there, have the pathway vetted out with the community and go for that once we develop that plan.
Any other comments? I think that we need to cancel the work session. We're coming up close, so we need to make sure that the public knows that that's canceled. I would like a note to say, coming fall two thousand and twenty, I mean, I don't want the public to think that we're just dropping it. We have other things to do. And additionally, with the cost of hiring a firm, I think we should take out their public notice information with our new Facebook page and some other things. I think there's notice and Survey Monkeys that could be distributed through the clerk's office that we wouldn't have to pay a firm to do. So, first, should we have a motion to cancel the work session?
I'll move to cancel the February twelfth work session on CIP.
Second?
Do you have any other comments?
No, I just wanted to make sure that we don't have any of these people who are like in a flight right here, making it right now, do you?
We don't.
Okay, all right.
The only thing that's really pressing is the Heat Loop. I think the hydro project is, you know, we have the flow study in place through the electrical department, that's down the road. So, that's really the most critical one.
So, I think we need that Heat Loop brought back to us. It sounds like there's some decisions that need to be made.
We do have, like he had mentioned before, some of the smaller projects coming. One example is the handicap ramp out back. I mean, we will be bringing that before you and as we get the bids on that here coming up soon. Just those type of things, there's some smaller project things that come out that are not the big build-to-building, but they're infrastructure things we need to get done, whether it's sidewalks or those things. And most of those, we have, the sidewalks, we do have some money for those already in a fund for the streets, but the handicap ramp would be something for sure we'd have to take out of general.
And in the CIP, most of those have a year allocation, so they're already up on the priorities in the CIP we have. I think we'll revisit that as department heads to make sure we're not going to omit anything and then bring that before council and say, "Here's what we're actually doing in the near future."
Any other questions? Let's vote on that motion to cancel the work session.
Voting to cancel the February twelfth work session and include a note that it will be rescheduled in the fall. McClure?
Yes.
Buds?
Yes.
Bucklon?
Yes.
Osanga?
Yes.
Kreitz?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Next on, go ahead. Did you have some?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is item ten, informational items and reports, ongoing city project and goal list. Are there any questions regarding that? Starts on page seventy-nine. City Clerk's report on public records requests through February third starts on page eighty. And then, December two thousand and nineteen, city improvidence financials. Are there any report, any questions regarding those? No, next on the agenda is council comments. We'll start with our newest council member, Councilmember Kreitz. So, we'll go to the far left, Councilmember Bucklon.
This weekend, we were at the Sea Life Center Gala, and it was my fourth year volunteering. We had a great time, and I think they raised a lot of money. I'm not going to tell you how much they raised, but it was a lot, and I'm really happy for them. And congratulations to Mrs. Kreitz, and I hope you have a great time here on council with us. And that's it.
Councilmember Buds?
So, welcome to Councilmember Kreitz here, too. But I also wanted to thank everybody who also put in their names here, too, hopefully then, too, as it kind of gets that discussion going as we get on to the elections later on, there are two more people wanting to get into that one. I wanted to also thank everybody who's here. We had kind of a, right at the beginning of the meeting, we had kind of a full house, people standing, things like this or two, and so, I want to make sure that goes on record that we are, we are having some pretty good crowds here, too, of working with things there, too. I think that, I think that right now, too, as we started looking at a lot of different things that we're working on right now, too, I feel that we're starting to now, we've become a full council now, too, of starting to move forward with a lot of different things or two. And I think now that we've got everything settled, we have things in place here, too. I think Seward now is something that we're starting to move forward, and we're starting to gain ground again rather than getting mired down with a lot of other different things. So, I'm really, really happy with that.
Councilmember Osanga?
I'd like to say thanks to all those who ran for the open council seat and welcome Councilmember Kreitz, and be safe out there.
Vice Mayor McClure?
Well, I also want to thank those who put their names in, and welcome to Julie. It was an interesting time because we got a lot of emails and phone calls and comments of support for various applicants, and it's heartening to think that there's that much interest in people being on council because sometimes you sit up here and you think people are just angry with you all the time, you know? So, that's a good thing, and thank you for the people who came out. I want to thank the council members for passing the resolution, the adjustments to our agenda. We're just trying to make it so we can get out of here at a reasonable hour for the public. It's for you that we're doing this. And also, remind you, if you're interested in nerdy things, science ball starts Friday, and you can go out to the high school and see the reports that the kids make, and then the thing I do, moderating the question times starts, it's all day Saturday and half a Sunday. It's just one of those things that they actually tried to take away from us, and it's been here since its inception. And a few years ago, thanks to the council that was seated at the time and the city manager writing letters, they, it stayed here in Seward, which brings quite a few people to Seward for that weekend, and it's really fun for me. So, I just, I get to be a scientist for a few days again. Anyway, that's all I got.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone that applied for the council seat. Wow, we had some great candidates. You know, that makes it hard for us to make a decision. I just want to specifically thank Mrs. DeMoss. If she will run in October, I will vote for you. We're so grateful to have small business owners like our own Councilmember Bucklon willing to spend their free time here away from their own businesses, so I thank for that willingness. And I just want to thank Councilmember Kreitz for being willing. I think what really tipped the scales for me was your board experience and your healthcare experience and, you know, the safety and fire things that we want to move forward with and the police things that, safety and security for our community. Also, want to say that our airport project, as you can tell from our discussions up here, it's a hard project. It's a not. You know, we're talking about ownership, we're talking about the runway, the river. It's not just, we want the long runway because we want the long runway because we want the long runway. We really need to make sure that we're asking for the right thing and working towards that. And I think my goal right now is, and I need to get the clerk an agenda statement before I go to Juneau, but I think we need to set a joint work session with the flood board and start talking about that resurrection river and the options that we can do to start moving that forward. We need to get the Corps of Engineer involved, and we should have been doing that piece many years ago. So, I'd like to move that forward. And then, I also just want to take a couple of minutes. I have the state legislative priorities. We're working with lobbyists that were utilizing our time in Juneau, and I just want to mention a couple of things. We'll be advocating for all these items. Specifically, we want to talk about the Harbor Grant Program, and if you hear something that I'm not mentioning, please speak up. Full funding for the Alaska Police Standards, that we get full reimbursement on our police recruitment costs. Full funding to the DOT to return a hundred percent of our operational costs to the jail. That's been crippling us lately for the last few years. Full funding DOC in order to continue state operation of Spring Creek Correctional Center. I think at our last meeting, we saw that we most recently lost that superintendent, so we need to make sure that we're talking to DOC how much we want Spring Creek here, and we want that fully funded, fully staffed, and make sure that they're staffing that to the levels that they should be. Full funding of AVTEC. AVTEC escaped in the state budget and did pretty well, but we need to make sure to, whenever we're in Juneau, speak to the support of that. Legislative support for Sea View, expanding access to mental health and substance use disorder treatment. They're doing great things there, and we need to make sure that that gets expanded. Reinstate the state funding for Silverton Maintenance Station. I think we should be bringing that up with our representatives whenever we have a chance. And then, going to the two-point-five rebuild of the electric transmission Seward Highway, make sure that we're working with the Rail Belt Electric Utility, a million dollars for system maintenance and repairs at the Alaska Sea Life Center. And those are just a few. And again, we'll talk to folks about our runway using our discussion tonight as a guide. But if there's anything else, we're going to be careful that we have our marching orders and speak to the items that our body has, you know, voted on us to speak to. So, thank you for sending Councilmember Bucklon, and I, and when we return, we will have a report also. Next item on the agenda is citizen comments. Is there anyone wishing to speak? We'll start with Mrs. Tousley.
Hi, everybody. Suzy Tousley, Inside City Limits. I encourage you to include in the discussion coming up with the flood board about the airport that you're talking about having a work session, the thoughts and ideas of the local airport committee that council and panelled last fall when you have those discussions. It's hundreds of years of local flight and flood knowledge, and it's one of the reasons council and panelled them. Thank you for the work that you guys are doing.
Thank you. Doc Rowe?
That guy. Outside City Limits, I'm with Heart Master. So, been pretty quiet, but nobody's really asked a lot, but where's the Coast Guard? So, I actually sit down, finally got contact today. They're actually starting the meetings tomorrow to bring all the Coast Guard together to start, where are they going to go? They want to go to SMIC, they said that today. So, they're supposed to call me tomorrow and see what they're going to do. I asked if I could be in our meetings, and they said no. So, if they have questions, they'll email me, and then we'll just go from there. But just to give you a quick update, we are working, going forward with the Coast Guard.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Jaffa?
Bruce Jaffa, outside City Limits. Welcome, our new city council member. Again, I am appreciative of the efforts you guys do. It's a citizen, volunteer citizen group that does tremendous good for the community. It's not always an easy task, it takes a lot of time. Appreciative of the administration and all the staff here for helping make a great city. I enjoy coming to Seward because of the kind of things you do, Norm, Doug, John, all of you. Couple of comments. I did have, I did have the opportunity to attend the gala and saw many, the majority of city council members there, and it was fun to see you in a social environment and be able to, you know, talk about silly things. It was a great event. The Sea Life Center deserves all the support that we can give it. Carol and I, as owners of a construction business, have been fortunate, and we've been able to help with that. We're very proud of that. Some of the people like Darryl who was here helped prod us into it in the early days, and we appreciate it. I did have a chance to talk to Captain Sean McGinnis with the Coast Guard yesterday. Norm may have spoke with him, and he, pardon me, not yesterday, but at the gala. It was, you know, casual discussion. He's very enthusiastic about Seward. He does not think that it's only going to be one boat here. He's very big on having a slip where there can be a second mooring as well. I'll talk just a little bit about two things that are really on opposite poles of it. One would be conservative nature. When we talk about spending public money, that's your money, it's my money. I've been fortunate to pay a lot of taxes. You know, it sounds silly, but, you know, if you make money, you pay taxes. I'd like to pay more taxes, that would mean I'd make more money. So, I'm not opposed to making money or paying taxes. I don't want to see them wasted. We talk about the airport, this is not free money. This is our money, you know? To some degree, it comes from everybody in this room and across the country, so we want to see it spent wisely. The idea of building a portion of the airport and throwing it away and building something else, we don't want, we want to avoid that. I know we all do. I'll come back to the airport in a minute. So, that's on the conservative side. On the liberal side, we have had people come through Seward who have gone to AVTEC, who are community, live in the community of Kaktovik, which just suffered a devastating fire. I don't know how many people have been in the villages around the state of Alaska. I've been, I've been to a lot of the little dots, and most of those towns center around the school. Anything that this town individually or as a town can do to help Kaktovik, particularly because of the tide, so many people from the community, the Bush community, coming through AVTEC, we should do it. We should reach out. Every opportunity to, on the GoFundMe that you guys could help with individually or as a city, we should consider. So, that's a dichotomy, dichotomy in my personality. I don't want to waste money, but I do want to help my fellow man. But one thing I would say about the airport, and thank you for considering that, this is a flood control project. A couple of comments. The DOW report in two thousand and eight, the existing airport layout would minimize environmental impacts. This is what they said. It would minimize, of all the three alternates, it would minimize the impacts. Keeping the resurrection river channel east of the airport minimizes sediment deposition near the right railroad dock. In two thousand and fourteen, Ron Long said he was surprised to hear that everything's not on the table. He strongly said the city's in favor of dredging and considers that an effective solution. In two thousand and sixteen, City Manager Jim Hunt was quoted in the City News as saying, he stated, "The number one issue is the river, maintaining, dredging, and moving the river. Nothing can be done until the river is addressed." In two thousand and sixteen, Christie Terry and Ron Long spoke at a meeting together as a proponent for dredging, saying that the railroad and the city both use dredging effectively, and for the state to take it off the table, it begs a question. It begs a question. And one last thing in my discussion. DOT has pushed this whole airport as, "We got to do it because we want to give you folks medical, medevac assurance." Where have they been since two thousand and eight? How come all of a sudden now, in the last four months, it's a crisis? They've had ten years for this crisis. So, for them to use that as a weapon is erroneous.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Linda Paquette, outside the City Limits Airport Committee. So, there's a couple of things, just technically, that I don't know if it's clear, so I just want to clarify them. What you have as your federal priority is actually not the same as one point one. So, we just really, when you're in Juneau, you need to be careful because one point one from DOT is So we just really, when you're in Juno, you need to be careful because 1.1 from DOT is destroying the existing long runway, shortening it to the 3,300 feet and abandoning the rest of it. So even the original 1.1 that DOT was proposing is not what you want. And that's why in your legislative priority, what it's worded differently, it doesn't refer to 1.1 anymore, but, but there were references to 1.1 and, and the long runway as being the same. So I just wanted to clarify that. The problem with the long runway proposal, the 1.1 that DOT proposed, is that they're going to shorten it and they're going to destroy it, the end of it. And then that again is, we're back to dealing with the river because you're just opening up the river coming. So I'm, I'm glad you voted both the resolutions down and I'm glad you're going to do a work session for, um, dealing with the river and the flood board, working with the flood board. We still need, I think, another work session of some form where we talk about what the ownership possibilities are, because I don't think that it has to be limited to just the city. I think that there are private partnerships that are possible. Um, and the other thing I wanted to clarify about the, the business about the MOU, on the 2.2 and the MOU and the additional money to extend it, you'd still only be extending it 4,000 feet, not the 4,200. And that's really the, the critical part of that. That's why you don't even want 2.2 to move forward because this promise of, oh, you could add more money and we could make it longer, you couldn't make it long enough. And, and, and now you're still, now you're out in the wetlands, you've got all kinds of other issues. So what I would love to, to see explored is some kind of conversation about other ownership options. At the August meeting, Tim Dillon was very interested in talking about an association. Homer has a problem with their airport. And let's all remember too, the second the DOT is done, they are very much going to want to just hand us off the keys because they don't want this airport anyway. Ownership is already a problem. If you would give them, what was the thing? We'll buy it for a dollar. I don't have a dollar, I'll give you a dollar. You know, I mean, they don't want it. They don't want ownership of it. So that works in our favor in this, I think. And I think that because you're going to go to Juno, there's a good possibility that you could come up with some other options for that $20 million. Just because it says it's only good till October, um, you know, those people can change things if they decide they want to. And so I don't see why that $20 million couldn't be earmarked and held, they do it, I know they do, you know, um, towards a project that both DOT and Seward could agree to through a process of transferring of the ownership. I just think there's much more conversation to take place. And I do think it's probably something that needs to have a public vote, but it needs to have at least a work session before that. So I hope you'll consider that. And then I did want to just say too, that I understand why you changed, if I understand it right, there will be in future meetings, no council comments, citizen comments, council comments. It'll just be council comments, no, it'll just be citizen comments and then council And the only disadvantage to that is if someone sat here the whole thing and, I don't know, I just, I don't know. I, we'll have to see how it plays out. It just seems like I, I'm just so used to it, being able to say, and then, you know, you have a response and maybe you'll still have a response. So, I don't know. A lot of times people stand here five minutes and then there isn't any response and then close. So that's the thing I'm anticipating. We'll see. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Suzy Casagrande, Inside City Limits. I want to say congratulations to Julie, Councilmember Kreitz. Um, I had the honor of meeting the Kreitz when they first came to town and in my heart, I knew that they had a very special place within our community. So it's really exciting to see you here on the dais and, and to see how you guys have found your way into our groups. So, pleasure. I also want to try to gracefully say that maybe sometimes we need to slow down. I was thinking about the word transparency today and it's like, sometimes it comes with such a negative connotation, like, oh, you know, you're trying to be transparent or you're forcing us to be transparent or you don't think we're transparent enough, but communication, maybe? Like transparency is communication? And so there's been a couple of things, one being the RFP for the attorneys, that as a citizen on the outside, without being in your guys' emails and without being in your laydowns and without being in your memos, it can feel like there's some backdoor stuff going on. Not that I'm saying there is, but it can look like that if you don't have the communication on the agenda so that we all can see what's happening. And I understand there's new staff and I, I understand we're overloaded and I understand we're trying to find how we did things in the past and try to piecemeal things together and do things in the future. So I hope I'm not being taken as accusatory or wrong, but I just hope that moving forward, things can be better communicated by having things in print and discussed here at this dais, because there are a lot of people paying attention and it can be confusing and you can get lost if you don't understand. My timer hasn't started. So with that said, rule nine. Um, I don't know what happened tonight. I heard someone say, okay, so that's enacted, but my understanding was that it was on the consent agenda for a discussion, but does that mean that you guys actually changed council rules and procedures with the discussion item? And if so, did you really do it through the consent agenda? Like, that's what I mean by slow down. So I know that we have administration currently that likes everybody equally, but from my past, leaving discretion in the lap of the city manager, if I want to have a presentation, I really have to go to the city manager and if they say no, then I have to go lobby my council members, my council members have to lobby the city manager, but ultimately he has to say so. Why would he change his mind, or she, whoever we have in the future, if, if they just don't like me? I'm not saying that that's what's happening, but it just makes me as a citizen feel like my voice is being taken away to not be able to lobby my council members. You guys are here for me to lobby you. I shouldn't have to go to the city manager and quite frankly, I feel like that change in that rule is just putting more burden on your city manager for citizens to come knocking at his door. That's your guys' job. I'm supposed to come knocking at your door, not his, is what I understand. So, um, I don't, I don't know how many minutes I've taken, so I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Are there any council and administration response to citizen comments? Vice Mayor McClure?
Um, response to Linda, what we did was, um, we took out the council, the, the meeting's over, you know, the business. We moved the council comment, well, we took out council comments, we put in the citizens' comments. And then after that, it says council and administration comments and response to citizens' comments. So what will happen in the future, we'll give our comments, but also be able to respond like I am now. So we did not take that out.
Um, I have a comment to the clerk. Madam Clerk, we're, I know with the website transition, we used to put RFPs on the website, those notices, is that back on our new website?
It is.
Okay, so are, any RFP that the city distributes, there's a page on our website that those are?
There is a page dedicated to RFPs and bids.
Okay.
There's currently nothing on there today, but there, it was on there until January 31st, the deadline, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, so, um, so we did put, we did put the RP out publicly and I just plagiarized what they did previously. So trying to follow in suit what they had done previously is what we try to do. I do want to address real quickly, the medevac flights are not available to come in when it is flooded. So that's, so when they do have flooding on the river and the short runway is too small. So that's where they're saying, oh, we'll give you 3,300, you can bring flights in in that situation. And the C-130s require 5,200 feet, not 4,200. That's what Senator Sullivan's office expressed to me. So C-130 is not going to come in here on 4,200 feet. Um, that's all I have.
Any further comments? Okay, hearing and seeing nine, we'll adjourn the meeting.